Good evening and welcome to the City Council's June 18th City Council Meeting, our special City Council Meeting. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. For those in virtual attendance, please note that there is a globe icon near the hand feature on your screen. This will allow you to listen to tonight's meeting in Spanish through item D1. For those participating at the Bell Haven Community Campus, I would like to provide a and would like to provide a public comment in English or Spanish, please complete a speaker card and provide it to our associate planner, Matt Pruder. Our interpreters this evening are Gabriela Zayas Alom, Isabel Gonzalez Gutierrez, Angela Thillen, and Maya Fonseca. Thank you all for your time and services today.
Muy buenas tardes. Para aquellos participantes que se encuentran en persona acá en la cámara, por favor pasen por nuestra mesa de interpretación para recoger el equipo y escuchar la interpretación de la reunión de esta noche en español. Para aquellos que se encuentran participando a través de Zoom, noten que hay un globo terráqueo en la parte de abajo de la pantalla. Se hacen clic ahí, podrán seleccionar español para escuchar la reunión en español. Para aquellos que se encuentran en el campus comunitario de Bell Haven, que se encuentren allí en persona, si quieren realizar un comentario público en inglés o en español, pueden, por favor, completar una tarjeta de orador, llénenla y se la pueden llevar al compañero Matt Pruder. Muchísimas gracias también a las intérpretes de esta noche, que son Gabriela Zayas Alom, Isabel Gonzalez Gutierrez, Angela Thillen, y Maya Fonseca. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is roll call. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs is joining us virtually using provisions from the Brown Act. In chambers are City Council members Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, City Attorney Nira Doorty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our special June 18th City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person in the City Council chambers, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. And if participating in person at the Bell Haven Community Campus, to complete a speaker card and provide it to Matt Pruder. That concludes my instructions at this time. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item is agenda review. Agenda review provides notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? Thank you. The next item is study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for the public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to the staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. Tonight, the study session item is D1, receive an overview and provide feedback and guidance on the revised draft general plan, environmental justice, and safety elements in preparation for the final draft documents. Here to introduce this item is our city planner, Calvin Chan.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of the council, staff, as well as community. I'm Calvin Chan, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. I'm joined with other members of the project team, including Deanna Chow, Community Development Director, Mary Wagner from the City Attorney's Office, Kate Kennedy, Director of Programs from Climate Resilient Communities, as well as Eric Hallaway, Managing Director of Change Lab Solutions. Those are our project team here in Council Chambers. Also at the Bell Haven Community Campus, we have Associate Planner Matt Pruder. And online, we have Principal Planner Tom Smith with the city, as well as Asher Cohn, Senior Planner with M Group. For our study session this evening, staff recommends that the City Council receive an overview and provide feedback and guidance on the city's revised draft general plan, environmental justice, or EJ, and safety elements. In this study session, staff will highlight document revisions as well as community outreach. We will also introduce the EJ Action Guide, formerly known as the Implementation Guide. Staff will also receive a review feedback from our June 3 Planning Commission Study Session and receive City Council feedback and guidance as well as community feedback. Taking a step back, looking past what has happened in the last year, some of the major milestones that have happened is in February of 2023, we held community meetings. In June 2023, when we last met with the City Council on this topic, we had a study session, a joint study session with the Planning Commission and City Council. Our housing element was certified in March of this year. Just a month ago, we held community workshops in the Bell Haven area. And two weeks ago, we held a study session with the Planning Commission. And this evening is our study session with the City Council. Looking ahead in the fall timeframe of this year, we're looking towards adoption of these elements. I'll now provide a very quick overview of the environmental justice, or EJ, element. In Menlo Park, as in many other areas throughout California and beyond, areas that have a higher concentration of low-income households are generally more likely to be exposed to pollution as well as environmental hazards. Consequently, individuals in these areas experience higher rates of poor health outcomes. In accordance with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, which has developed very thorough environmental justice element guidelines, the city has incorporated a robust community outreach and evaluated the entire city and identified two underserved communities, namely the Bell Haven and the Bayfront neighborhoods, which are generally described as the portion of Menlo Park that's located north of the US 101 Highway and within City Council District 1. And as shown on the screen, these are outlined in the magenta color. To reduce the disproportionate health risks and impacts that exist in Bell Haven and the Bayfront area, the environmental justice element includes different policies and programs that are organized into seven main goals that are consistent with state requirements. The goals are listed on this screen, and staff would just like to highlight goals two, four, and five in particular. These are the top community identified goals as identified through recent community outreach, and you'll hear hear more about that in just a moment. These top three goals are reducing pollution exposure and eliminating environmental inequities, promoting access to affordable, healthy, and high-quality foods, and providing safe, sanitary, and stable homes for all residents. In this next section, we'll give a very quick overview of the safety element update. The purpose of the safety element is to identify how to reduce potential risks of injury, property damage, as well as economic and social disruptions that could happen for a variety of reasons, including natural and human-made hazards. The safety element was last adopted by the City Council in 2013, and since then, many state laws have been enacted that require the safety element to address many different aspects, including climate change adaptation and resiliency, and also giving increased attention to wildfire and evacuation routes. Based on the approved project scope and budget, the update to the safety element intentionally focuses on our response to changes in state law. The safety element includes one overarching goal, which is to assure a safe community with the primary topic areas of general safety, geologic and seismic safety, and public safety and emergency response as the underlying topic areas. About a year ago, the Planning Commission and City Council jointly held a study session for the EJ and safety elements and provided direction for next steps. The study session provided an overview of the EJ and safety elements process and draft documents, and also provided the Planning Commission, Council, and members of the public an opportunity to provide feedback on the draft documents. In addition, staff provided a recommended refinement framework to integrate and make actionable the different community feedback that was received. The revised draft EJ element and safety elements incorporate this prior feedback, including recommended policies, programs, and prioritization. From the June 2023 study session, there were five themes that emerged, and they're listed on this screen. The five themes were to modify certain statements related to environmental health risks and underserved communities, to make adjustments to the refinement framework matrix, to continue to perform robust outreach and collaboration as part of this process, and to implement the best practices that we've learned from prior planning efforts, as well as the housing element update project in general. There was emphasis to think critically about funding needs and explore various funding sources at the local, state, and federal levels for implementation of the programs. And last but not least, to consider actions with short-term results that could demonstrate to Menlo Park residents the efforts to advance environmental justice as we finalize the documents. For the next few slides, I'll turn it over to Kate Kennedy, Director of Programs with Climate Resilient Communities, to give us a little bit overview for the community outreach and engagement efforts that have occurred over the past year.
Thank you, Calvin. Hello, City Council and Mayor Taylor. My name is Kate Kennedy, and I'm the Director of Programs with Climate Resilient Communities. I will be supported today by my executive director, Violet Wolf-Sayana, who will be arriving shortly. After a brief hiatus to focus on the housing element, outreach and engagement for the environmental justice element was begun again in earnest at the beginning of April. This included outreach and tabling at the Love Our Earth Festival, a presentation to the Bell Haven Climate Change Community Team, as well as two workshops and a housing resource fair, as well as outreach on social media through email listservs, flyers that were physically posted and distributed door-to-door in the community, and other methods. Throughout this environmental justice element process, there have been more than 1,800 residents that have participated. We've had a survey that more than 420 households were represented in. We had more than eight workshops. We've had about a dozen one-on-one stakeholder discussions, and it's really been a very comprehensive effort. And equity and reducing barriers to participate in the process has been at the center of the effort from the very beginning. Next slide, please. So the meetings that were conducted in May were geared primarily toward prioritization, recognizing that there's been a lot of great work done by staff and the consultants, as well as the community, to produce a lot of programs and policies that would address the environmental injustices in the Bell Haven and Bayfront communities. But there's a recognition that the city can't do everything at once. And so the question that we turned to in earnest was understanding what were the priorities, what has to act, like what has to be taken care of immediately, and what can wait a little bit longer? The way that this was conducted was through two workshops, one that was conducted entirely in Spanish and one that was conducted in English. Both were held at the Church of God on Hamilton Avenue, near Mount Olive there in Bell Haven. The prioritization worksheet included an opportunity for folks to rank the goals themselves, as well as the policies and programs within each goal, on a one-to-seven basis for the goals, and then one-to as many number of programs or policies that were in those given goal subsection. I have the raw data here in drawers form, which is about 60 pounds of cardstock. I also have attached in your packet should be the Excel sheet that has the raw data that you can look for, as well as the summary of our outreach and engagement. Each participant was given one of the worksheets, and then were grouped into small groups of six or seven folks. And then there was a facilitator assigned each group, which took notes about the conversation that was occurring on a large sticky, helped answer questions as people worked through the worksheet, and helped guide folks toward really clarifying qualitatively the reasoning behind why they were prioritizing the things that they were. I would like to read a couple of quotes that were captured during that process that I think really exemplified the effort and the reason that we're undertaking this work. One participant said, "Living here is expensive, and many times we can't afford quality food because we have to pay rent, no matter what, and that affects our health." Another participant said, "As I age, after I retired, I'm unable to afford to live." Another resident said that there are a lot of residents that have had to move away because of rent hikes and discriminatory home buying practices. And finally, someone said that environmental justice is essential to the growth of our community. And I want to stick on that final quote for a moment. We'll focus on the Bell Haven neighborhood throughout tonight's discussion and the Bayfront. But the environmental justice element is something that will help the entire city. People on the other side of the 101 want their friends and family in Bell Haven to be able to stay housed and to live in clean and healthy environments. Reducing pollution in Bell Haven will help the entire city and region achieve the goals that it needs. And very pointedly, the city and the county and the state will not meet its climate goals without an explicit focus that prioritizes the most vulnerable residents. We can't do it. It's mathematically impossible if we don't include the folks that are going to be the most vulnerable to climate hazards. If you read through our report in your packet, you can see all of the comments that were transcribed, both that were given verbally and written on the large post-it notes in those prioritization sections, as well as everything that was written on the worksheets. That's all been translated and transcribed, as well as the raw data from that prioritization process. So these three elements that are highlighted here are the top three priorities that emerged from those conversations with nearly 90 residents across those two workshops. And if you look at the average ranking position, so on a one-to-seven scale, what was the average rank assigned to a particular goal? You'll see that housing, providing a safe, sanitary, and stable homes for all residents was the top priority, followed by promoting access to high-quality and affordable food, and then reducing pollution exposure and improving air quality. If you look specifically at the number of people who assigned a number-one priority, so the proportion of folks that said, "This is my number-one priority," you see those same top three issues rise to the top. And that's information that's also expressed diagrammatically in the document, the outreach summary that we provided. You'll also see in that report three key takeaways that I'd like to briefly summarize. First is the overwhelming prevalence of concerns around housing instability, and this is something that is a top environmental justice issue. Your home is your first line of defense against climate vulnerabilities, against pollution exposure, and can often be itself a major determinant of health. Additionally, if you are displaced from your home, it's very rare that you're displaced to a cleaner community, a less vulnerable community. Oftentimes, just because of the history of racism in this country and its correspondence with environmental burden, that displacement is often unidirectional. You end up in more vulnerable places. You end up in more polluted communities. You don't somehow find your way into a nicer environment. And when we talked to folks about why housing was a top environmental justice priority to them, they said things like, "If we can't keep our community here, who are we improving the environment for? What's the point of this work if it's not to benefit me and my family and the community as I know and love it?" The second kind of key point that rose to the top of the list was the disparity between the Bell Haven and Bayfront communities and the rest of Menlo Park. Silicon Valley in general is a place whose defining feature is its inequality. I think if we look back at one of the first pieces of work we did on this project in the survey that we conducted in collaboration with Stanford University, we found really stark evidence of that disparity. So we found, for example, that 35% of Bell Haven households reported that they'd be unable to afford a $400 expense as compared to 2% of the rest of Menlo Park. We found that 73% of Menlo Park residents said that they were able to easily afford housing compared to just 32% of those in Bell Haven, meaning 68% of folks in Bell Haven said that they were not able to easily afford the cost of house. Another point that was really apparent in the conversations that we're having is that there was folks there who needed help reading to get through the worksheet. And this isn't something that people think about when they think about Menlo Park. And I think that we need to take the participation of those people very seriously because this process was designed to hear from them. And they are folks that are not being captured in our typical methods of outreach and engagement. So hearing from them and designing programs that address their needs ensure that we're really meeting the needs of all of our community and not letting people slip through the cracks. The last key point that I'd like to raise is, and this was something that was surfaced in every conversation that we had throughout the more than two-and-a-half-year process was a focus on accountability. The group that I was facilitating consistently ranked civic engagement and participation as their bottom priority. And I asked them why that was, and they said things like, "The city's going to do what it wants to do anyway. Our participation doesn't matter. There's no reason for me to believe that me saying this is going to have any impact." And folks were appreciative that we'd made accommodations and that we'd brought them out for that, but they weren't holding out any hope of amounting to anything. And so, next slide. This kind of leads into our recommendations to really ensure that community input has been accurately captured in the document itself. So the first recommendation was to increase opportunities for accountability through strict reporting requirements on the EJ element programs and policies, as well as timelines with details for those priorities. I have here, someone was nice enough to send me a copy of the survey that they still had from the Bell Haven Community Visioning in 2013. And I was also forwarded a similar document from 1993. And there's an alarming amount of things that still haven't been addressed, even though they've been known about for 30 years at this point. And so finding a way to build in wherever possible accountability in this document is not only key to addressing the history of discrimination in the community, but also key to restoring people's faith in the government process, restoring people's faith in their ability to, you know, control the conditions around them, to engage democratically and be able to improve the lives of them and their neighbors through that action. If you look at the third recommendation as well, it's to strengthen program and policy language throughout the environmental justice element, for example, by changing encourage or shoulds or coulds to shells, musts, wills. This is not just guidance for me. The California Attorney General has issued guidance around environmental justice elements and recommends strong language to that effect to encourage accountability, as well as things like identifying responsible parties for implementation, as well as funding mechanisms. The second recommendation was just to make sure that the word "stable" was included throughout the document when we talk about housing, as that component, the fear of displacement, was really top of mind in every conversation that we had. And then finally, one key opportunity that the environmental justice element offers us is the opportunity to be more specific even than we were in the housing element. So the environmental justice element can be more prescriptive, more descriptive, but not less than the housing element. So we can zero in more specifically on some of the things that we think would help address the environmental justice issues in the Bell Haven neighborhood, and gives us an opportunity to articulate specifically what should be studied, what should be included in that anti-displacement plan. And I think that one of the things that we wanted to focus on from our last May discussion planning session was that folks wanted, again, we're interested in trying to show people that their participation in this process mattered. And so we want programs that can be implemented to show them that they've been heard and that actions are being taken to improve measurably and tangibly the problems that they're facing. And so there are programs within the anti-displacement plan which can be accelerated and should be implemented as soon as possible. Specifically, I believe the recommendation in our report is related to creating a program for, to ensure a right to legal counsel for tenants that are facing eviction. And that is something that has tremendous merit and has a lot of evidence now behind it. San Francisco implemented such a plan, and they found immediate success, and they found monetary success. It cost them about $5,000 to represent a case, but to house someone in a shelter for a year cost them $75,000. And so that's a way that they're keeping folks in their houses, preventing illegal evictions, and keeping the community safe and stable. So those were four recommendations as they emerged from that prioritization process and the subsequent more than two years of engagement with the Bell Haven community in really deep ways. And I'm happy to answer any questions and turn it back to Calvin and city staff to take you the rest of the way. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your excellent summary. Jumping back into the last theme from our June 2023 joint PC as well as council study session, it was regarding funding needs and sources, and a key theme was to identify these funding needs and sources. The EJ element specifically table EJ8, which contains the different goals, policies, and programs for the element, as well as the complimentary action guide. Both include listing of potential funding sources that are known at this time. The project team also identified whether or not programs or the action items were focused on infrastructure enhancements, specific sites, and/or potentially eligible for funding through different special funds. Most recently, at the City Council's June 11 Public Hearing on the upcoming fiscal year budget, the City Council also expressed support for use of the Bayfront Mitigation Fund to support EJ element programs. We've mentioned a few times this action guide idea, and this next section will give a bit more description. The action guide is a separate complimentary document that adheres to the different EJ goals, policies, and programs, and also the general plan guiding principles, but lies outside of the general plan itself. The action guide includes different action items to implement certain EJ programs. The action guide idea came from the desire to not lose sight of more specific feedback from the community regarding specific actions to pursue to implement certain EJ programs. This dual document approach of having a general programs and the EJ element, as well as more specific actions in the action guide, allows for more frequent updating of action items to respond to changes in community needs, funding opportunities, as well as ongoing community outreach, particularly from Menlo Park's underserved communities. Staff is in the process of completing and creating a very comprehensive action guide document that will list all of the EJ element programs and action items, and this is planned to be available on the city's website and updated on a rolling basis in order to improve accountability, monitoring, as well as tracking efforts to advance EJ. Staff also recommends an annual report that would be released in the early part of the year that could be used to evaluate different programs and action items from the prior year. The next section of our presentation will give a brief overview of certain revisions to the draft safety element. Two policies were revised regarding disaster preparedness planning, as well as community preparedness. For disaster preparedness planning, additional language was provided to enhance and support multilingual and multimodal outreach in underserved communities. For community preparedness enhancement was made to support countywide preparedness response as well as protection services. A new program was added pertaining to sea level rise planning, and it talks about collaborating with different agencies to develop a sea level rise plan as part of a subregional San Francisco Bay shoreline resiliency plan. No other changes to the open space conservation or noise elements have been made at this time. At the June 3 Planning Commission Study Session, there was a variety of different feedback, and I'll go over some of the feedback themes that staff received at that evening. First, to talk about public feedback, there was a theme to enhance action items, text that could indicate city commitment as well as accountability. In response, staff will complete a review of all EJ element programs, as well as action items, and seek additional opportunities to modify the text with stronger, more committed language where possible and appropriate for a long-range planning document. The second theme was regarding exploring financial and programmatic incentives to assist Menlo Park residents, and staff will continue to evaluate opportunities for funding as they arise and seek opportunities to communicate and publicize those resources to help Menlo Park residents secure safe, sanitary, and stable housing. A third theme was regarding revision of documents for easier comprehension. Staff will use a combination of different notations, as well as track changes for future document revisions, depending on what is clearest for a presentation as well as readability. The last theme from the public feedback was to improve documentation, transparency, as well as to monitor progress, and staff will seek opportunities to clarify and enhance connections between funding and spending actions, with a focus toward continually enhancing civic engagement in these matters and also establishing stronger links between EJ implementation and city funding processes where feasible. And last but not least, there was a theme to update the safety element to respond to additional topic areas beyond state requirements, and staff will evaluate adding some of those examples and highlighted topic areas of interest to consider to existing programs wherever feasible. Turning now to the five themes that were received from the Planning Commission for feedback. The top three EJ element priorities identified through the May 2024 workshops was noted that they should be the focus of impactful and feasible actions to advance EJ in Menlo Park. Staff agrees with and intends to incorporate these recommendations that Mr. Kennedy summarized just a moment ago into the next draft of the element. The second theme was regarding exploring opportunities in the document to strengthen the city's commitment and accountability to advance EJ, and staff notes this feedback and will definitely continue to explore those opportunities. And the same goes for the third theme, which is to enhance civic engagement. Civic engagement in and of itself is EJ element goal seven to continue to strive for. The fourth theme is regarding clarification regarding how different components of the EJ element, as well as the action guide, work together and to ensure that the public remains involved and informed of the actions. We already discussed a few moments ago regarding staff's plan to create this comprehensive action guide that will live on the city's website and be updated on a rolling basis and complimentary to an annual report that could be used to evaluate prior actions. And last but not least is the theme to consider updates to the safety element to address additional topic areas beyond state requirements, such as planning for biosafety levels. And staff does propose to include a new safety element program to evaluate biosafety levels and associated zoning changes. Looking ahead, the summary of revisions is displayed on the screen. These are the actions that staff will take to update the documents. We will revise the documents per the staff recommendations noted in EJ element table, EJ8, which is the goals, policies, and programs, as well as the action guide. We will revise per the May 2024 community workshop recommendations summarized in report from climate resilient communities. We'll revise per the June 3 study session feedback themes received from the public, as well as the planning commission, and of course revise per tonight's study session feedback from the city council. Staff would like to offer three questions for consideration that may help the city council in their deliberation this evening. The first is, did the process over the past year result in appropriate refinements to the environmental justice element? Does the action guide serve as a good implementation tool to advance environmental justice in Menlo Park? And just to note, lastly, that staff intends to update the EJ and safety elements based on the feedback received and as noted in your staff report this evening. And if the council has a further guidance or feedback, we're happy to receive that. Looking ahead in the full timeframe, we anticipate bringing the revised draft EJ and safety elements back to the Planning Commission to start the adoption process and following up that with council review. For the latest updates, and just to remind folks that we have a Housing Element Update Project webpage, which is menlopark.gov/housingelement. This is the one-stop shop for all things related to the housing element, safety element, as well as environmental justice element. So please stay up to date and sign up for our email list. And with that, we'll conclude staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions, and we welcome your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from city council members before we go to public comment? And I have a comment, and I want to thank staff, but especially CRC Cade. I appreciate everything that you shared with the city council and with the public as far as what you heard from community members. It has been a huge concern of mine that we keep asking the same questions over and over again, and actions haven't taken place. I'm confident in the city council and community members that that will happen in this process. But I do appreciate you bringing your heart into this conversation and representing the community's perspective and voice. So thank you. At this time, Ms. Heron, can you call for a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session item D1, receive an overview and provide feedback and guidance on the revised draft general plan, environmental justice, and safety elements in preparation for the final draft documents. Please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlany cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person in the chambers, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If participating at the Bellhaven Community Campus, please complete a speaker card and return it to Matt Bruder. So I'll ask our folks at BHCC to just send me a message if we have the number of speakers over there available. And I will make this a final call for public comment on study session item D1. This way, we can gauge our total number of...
Sure.
So I can hear BHCC. You can go ahead and mute if you can just maybe send me a message and let me know the number of speakers. Thank you.
We have one public speaker at the Bellhaven Community Campus. We can have that person come up now if permitted.
I'll have them pause just for a moment while I collect cards here and see how many hands we have. I think what we'll do is we will start with our in-person chamber speakers, then we'll turn to our in-person BHCC speakers, and then we'll turn to our Zoom speakers. And I'll give folks just a couple more seconds here to either submit their cards or engage their virtual hands. Okay, so it looks like we'll have a total of seven speakers. And with that, again, I'll be starting with our speakers in chambers, and then we'll go to BHCC, and then we will go to our Zoom. So our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, council. I'm Lynn Bramlett, a 28-year resident of Menlo Park, District 3. And I am concerned, what I'm concerned about is balance. I think the environmental justice and the elements that items talked about are very important, but so is public safety. And I'm concerned at what feels like, or seems like, a lack of attention to some very real risks facing our community. And I think many people don't realize how close some risk could face us, like in August 2020, those CZU lightning complex fires. If the wind hadn't shifted, the fires were predicted to burn through significant parts of Portola Valley and Woodside, and the firefighters were planning on holding the line at the 280 freeway. What happened in Maui could happen here. I like to walk daily. I walk by soft story apartment buildings and summer condo conversions where residents are living in them unaware that these are seismically at risk of failure following earthquakes. And although they held up in 1989, and I heard this comment recently from a Spurs speaker, they may not, they may be weaker now and may not hold up again. So I think with some additional attention, we could, without putting an undue burden on the staff, for people willing to help, and I think more people can help in our planning efforts. That's why FEMA recommends a whole-of-community approach to planning, where groups are part of the planning process and they help to implement the plan. It doesn't have to be just the staff, and I think we could do more. So I'm here tonight to ask that we added some language for soft story retrofits. And there are people willing to help, and Ms. Goodman, who's been quite active with the life science, which I agree with, she's one of them. I am too. I've met with her, and we've done account. I'd also recommend down the road that we take a look at all our plans, because it all comes down to people, time, and money. We also have the local hazard mitigation plan, and I haven't heard a status update on that lately. How are all these plans actually going to be implemented? So I think safety should have more, starting with an updated section of the risks and hazards facing our community, which are more significant than in 2013 when that was drafted, and then some specific aspects, including soft story. And I would also add, looking at our building codes, consider strengthening them to support shelter-in-place capacity. So I don't know how it happened that, you know, it just seemed to go down one path, but I hope we can reconsider that and at least add some additional aspects to the safety element, including strength in policy language and some programs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Pam Jones, followed by Violet Sayena.
Good evening, council, staff, and particularly the presenters, and thank you for this information. Pam Jones, longtime resident of the Bellhaven neighborhood. I'm a member of several organizations, speaking only for myself. I also want to thank you for having the satellite at MPCC. That is just really powerful and helps the community to know that we really are in, being included and that what we have to say is valuable. Upon reviewing the 1993 Neighborhood Needs Assessment and an update discussed by the council in 2003, and reviewing various redevelopment agency reports, the RDA reports, and the 2021, 2013 Bellhaven Visioning and Action Plan, the commonality is the ability to fully fund the recommended projects. I'll say that again. The commonality is about funding. This does not negate the multiple meaningful achievements that came under the RDA. Although worded differently in different reports, items found in the environmental justice element, such as safe and stable housing, healthcare, traffic, then it was Raychem, Rainet, Informex, and Sun Microsystems, we have the same issues we're talking about today. The 1993 Neighborhood Needs Assessment included an implementation process and asked that it be monitored to make sure that that actually happened. If the effect on the quality of life for humans had been included in the 2016 Connect Menlo General Plans, EIR, which I know humans were not considered at that time, but we would not be here today if that was not the case. And to have a law that says you have to include the people, I find to be rather, actually rather insulting. We now have the opportunity to fully address significant issues that have affected the neighborhood. The commitment needed from the city is to seek funding in our budget and through matching funds. So I'm hearing that we've started that process already. The city must maintain ongoing communications, the website, hearing about the website. That's the start. That will help us a lot. If you lived in Bellhaven, what would you expect from our city? You know, consider if you lived where I lived and have lived for well over 50 years, what would you want? How powerful and committed are the Bellhaven residents to still be here saying the same thing? We know that it's been at least documented for 30 years, but in reality, it's actually been longer than that. One more thing. Could the staff report be translated into English? It was a real powerful exercise to know what it's like not to be able to read the information that I need for the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Violet Sayena, followed by Marlene Centoio.
Good evening, your honorable mayor and council members, and also city staff. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Violet Sayena, and I'm the Executive Director of Climate Resilient Communities. I'm just here, just want to say a couple of words, maybe not a couple of words, but just wanted to share our gratefulness, being an organization that has been working on this in support, with support from our other partners, the City and M Group, to put together EJ element. It has been two years. The last time I was here speaking to you all was also two years ago, but I'm here just to say thank you. Thank you to the city and also for the staff for what I have observed for the last two years, working closely with us and the community for acknowledging and also for the commitment. I think what we have presented tonight is clearly the voice of the community that we engaged. And my hope is that you have... And my hope is that you have already invested in the EJ Element. And my hope is that you will stay invested. Because as Pam has just mentioned, a lot of these things that we're bringing to you are not new issues, right? The community have been saying all of this in the past many years. And again, we're here presenting the same information, the same priorities and the same needs. And I think it's time, it's time to take action. I think it's time to continue that commitment and invest, invest in our underserved community of Bellhaven. Bring us along. I think that what we have put together and the information in front of you is more than enough to make the right choice and the right decision. So again, I want to express my, um, thankfulness, my gratitude to everyone involved and also especially to the city. I have seen the commitment, Justin and his team being present in many of the community engagement exercises and meetings that we've had. That's already, um, that already says something. And that brings hope to the communities that are waiting to see actions, action from these environmental justice element. This is a tool. This is the, this is it. We can use this to right any wrongs or, you know, address existing issues from past poor policies. So I hope that you will consider the recommendations and the hard work of everyone in this room in the past two years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So turn over to BHCC with Marlene Centoio and then to Zoom with John McKenna. So I'll ask BHCC to go ahead and unmute now and Marlene, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Marlene Centoio. Um, I'm a Bellhaven resident and community organizer with Bellhaven Empowered, a program of Menlo Together. I first want to thank Council, City Council, the city staff, the M Group, CRC, who has worked really, we've worked really closely with and have done, uh, they've done an outstanding job, um, working with us as a community as soon as they took on this project. And a special thanks to Bellhaven community members that have taken leadership in time and time again throughout the two years and a half to show up and share their community needs. Two requests is, one is to update the matrix based on the community feedback we received in June, um, especially the priority workshop. Um, under urgency, I think that should be updated based on the priorities that they said, um, were important. Also, um, request for the goals and policy programs table to re, be reviewed along with the implementation guide. We need more commitment and actions that align with community needs. As an example, the program indicated under table EJ eight that, um, they're going to be establishing and operating a farmer's market. Yet in EJ, the other EJ, um, table, the action item only commits to informing residents of permit application process for temporary street closure. So that's not, you know, at all what we're asking. We're asking for the city to take on the role of being able to provide a farmer's market so that residents can have access to affordable and healthy food. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So going to our Zoom attendees, uh, John McKenna, followed by Rob Chua.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, John.
Thanks, um, Honorable Mayor Taylor, fellow council members and city staff. My name is John McKenna. I serve as Vice Chair on the Environmental Quality Commission, but I am speaking tonight as an individual. I wanted to express my appreciation to the Bellhaven community and its leaders, climate resilient communities, especially Cade Kennedy, city staff and city council for all of the hard and thoughtful work that has gone into creating the environmental justice element. I appreciate staff's acknowledgement that accountability and action will be essential to demonstrate the city's commitment to environmental justice. I encourage staff and council to continue listening to the community and to do everything within the city's powers to ensure that the Bellhaven community's priorities are incorporated into the final document. By doing so, Bellhaven community members will know that their voices have been heard, acknowledged, and acted upon. It's also very important that the city allocate appropriate funding to the programs that are adopted in order to achieve the goals in the EJ Element and to thoroughly leverage outside funding opportunities. I look forward to a future where the Bellhaven community is able to thrive in a manner that shows Menlo Park is an equitable city where all residents have access to affordable and well-maintained housing, safe streets, an abundant tree canopy, clean air and water, walkable amenities, and a healthy and resilient environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Rob Chua, followed by Adina Levin.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Rob.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rob Chua here on behalf of the California Life Sciences Association. Uh, we're the trade association for the biotech industry. Uh, and we appreciate the council's work and due diligence, um, as it works to update its, uh, general plan uh, and environmental justice and safety elements. Uh, the life science, uh, industry is highly regulated across multiple regulatory agencies um, to ensure safety for employees, community, uh, and patients, uh, and strives to ensure safe operations. This extends to all areas, uh, including biosafety-level laboratories, which are critical to ensuring the innovative spirit of our region and state, uh, to continue to thrive. Providing flexibility for life science companies to grow is critical, uh, so the industry can continue to develop lifesaving medicines for patients around the world. Uh, California Life Science, um, uh, asks the council to consider this while working to update its general plan. We stand ready to provide feedback, um, and come to the table to ensure the balance of safety and innovation moves forward. Uh, thank you so much and, uh, that's my time.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next up is Adina Levin.
Uh, hello, my name is Adina Levin. I am a Menlo Park resident and, um, a part of, uh, Menlo Together, which has been of, a following along and, um, you know, generally supportive of the environmental justice element to really address the history of environmental, uh, in- injustice um, in Menlo Park and really very excited for this to be coming forward. And, um, in, really encourage the city council to be, um, listening to the priorities of the community that has raised them up with so much, uh, you know, diligent, um, input. And then, um, in particular, um, to be, um, looking to accountability to ensure that the, um, uh, components of this plan, um, happen. And I want to make a couple of points about the accountability. Um, one point is about, um, making the timeline, um, you know, uh, clear and easy to understand for members of the community to be able to say, okay, what is likely to happen, um, you know, like, like, uh, in, in what order? Um, so that is very important, including clearly identifying the things that can happen sooner so that people feel like something is changing. Like even though we're not going to have, uh, you know, full climate resilience in a few months, there are some things that the city can move forward, um, fairly quickly. And, and so please make that timeline, uh, clear. Um, uh, secondly, in terms of bringing things forward and accountability, one really critical accountability factor is the budget. Um, I love the quote that says, you know, don't just tell me what you value. Tell me your budget and I will show you what you value. And so therefore, um, you know, both, uh, you know, th- this year and then in the process going forward, there should be a very clear link, um, to the, um, things that are in the environmental justice element and what is being budgeted in the capital and operating budget for the city, uh, year after year after year. That is a really important way to make sure that we are moving forward to actually doing the things that we say that we want to do. And then also I think that the suggestion that was in the staff report about having a link to the housing element reporting is also good. Uh, because one, that there's going to be a lot of attention to our implementation of the housing element. And the housing element implementation does include, uh, the, you know, many tenant protection and affordable housing things that, um, you know, residents in the, um, uh, impacted communities have been really, uh, uh, saying. And so like bringing those forward at the same time will be helpful and like weaving it into the city's process. And then along with where, you know, how people across the city are paying attention to ensuring that we deliver on those, um, housing and, you know, affordable housing and tenant protection policies that the city is committing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our raised hands and our speaker cards. Seeing no others. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to everyone in person at the City Council chambers, also online and at the Bellhaven Community Campus that provided public comment. Um, I wanted to start off with a few questions, um, from folks in public comment. And I'll start with the safety element. And just thinking about the, the section that's opened. Is, if staff could tell me what the specific updates were on Section Seven Safety Background? So the geological hazards, fire hazards, extreme temperatures. This is page seventy-nine through one fifteen in the Safety Element Draft.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm looking at Section Seven, the Safety Element Background, um, beginning in the lower right-hand corner, and this has a page number of seventy-five. So staff did indicate, um, in the yellow highlights with the asterisk marks, the different sections of the new texts. So on page seventy-five, there was a description, uh, regarding the city's adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan in two thousand and twenty-one, as well as the requirements that come after that. Flipping forward a few more pages, on page seventy-eight, there was a new section regarding sea level rise planning uh, in accordance with Senate Bill two seventy-two. Flipping a few more pages after that, on page eighty, there was some additional description right above the geologic hazard section to talk about the study session that was held a year ago to receive feedback on the EJ and safety elements. And I don't believe there were any updates to the figures, uh, following these descriptions. We do have, uh, members of M Group online as well that helped us make this change. So if there's additional feedback, um, M Group, uh, please, please feel free to, uh, add additional commentary.
Thank you for pointing that information out. And if M Group could come on, that would be great.
Evening, Mayor Taylor. I'm Asher Coe with the M Group. Um, I don't have anything particular to add, Eric Calvin. You did a good job capturing what those updates were, um, in his brief summary right there. Did you have any other specific questions, Eric Calvin?
Um, my questions are about, actually, I have a few questions. Um, the first is, was there the same amount of outreach for the safety element as the EJ element? Cause just looking in the, the staff report and in the presentation, I don't see anything or even the information that CRC provided. It's seen because it sounds like it was two separate processes that worked together some, in some way. But I could be wrong. This is why I'm asking.
Thank you for the.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Calvin.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Perhaps I can start and other members of the project team, please feel free to chime in. Uh, so as the council is aware, this, this project that is the Housing Element Update Project and has three facets to it, the housing element, the environmental justice element, as well as the safety element. So the public outreach that has, uh, co- happened over the project in the last few years has really been, um, covering all three elements. The first part was primarily focused on the housing element. And then the latter parts now are really focused on the EJ and safety elements. I would say in my opinion that the EJ and safety elements, we were always doing outreach in the same manner. They were always coupled together. Housing element, a little bit different, um, because there were different requirements and a lot more, um, specificity that we had to do with the EJ and safety elements. There's also specificity, but in a different manner. So we chose to, um, couple those things off. But I would say that community outreach and engagement for EJ and safety has always been done together. Why you may hear more about EJ is, I think there's a lot of excitement built up over this brand-new element to our general plan. And a lot of the community outreach and interest and feedback that we've, uh, received is really focused on the EJ element. But there has always been opportunity to, uh, comment on the safety element and we have shared information at every step of the way.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you, um, sharing that information. What I do not see that would be nice is to have almost the same level of what the top three are that community members are concerned about. For the EJ, we could see for the safety element. I, I wasn't able to see. I do hear it in public comment. And that is, I'm thinking about the, the bio-science labs. I'm also thinking about, um, indoor air quality needs to be added too. And then also noise. And I'm not sure that there were updates to those three items, if I can read my writing. And then also just thinking about the, the safety element. I know the EJ was specific to one area. But I think the safety element feedback citywide is important because there are different levels of hazards, um, throughout our city. And I'm going to ramble a little bit. Um, and this is a question, is there a, a map that shows all of the soft story buildings for the city? And I'm not sure if soft story and liquefaction is the same, but I would have that question for that as well. Do we have a map that says what the liquefaction areas are of the city?
Regarding liquefaction, I do believe that there are maps that were generated and that was done as part of the multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. So that's towards, um, the back of the document that we just looked at. In terms of soft story buildings, I don't believe there is a graphic included in our safety element at this time.
And is there an opportunity to, I mean, as far as direction, is, is that some direction I can give this evening about having a map? Because if we're looking at an either emergency preparedness or disaster preparedness, I would think that would be needed, or it? I don't know. Um, it's, it's a question.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Deanna Chow, Community Development Director. And so I, I saw, um, City Manager Murphy also, uh, potentially would like to chime in. But so soft story is not the same as liquefaction. So liquefaction is more related to like the, the earth itself versus soft story being the building type. And so to actually do, uh, I think what I'm hearing is more of a survey would require like on the ground, reviewing each of the buildings to determine, um, whether or not it is a soft story. So it would be like a structure over, say, like a carport, open carport would be a soft, an example of a soft story building.
Thank you. Yes.
A follow-up question on this. Are there not county or s- state rules about building safety related to seismic conditions? So thinking about the soft stories, are there, are there no other places where that information is being collected presently?
I'm not aware, but we can certainly follow up. There are certainly, um, safety-related building code features related to seismic safety, you know, as new construction is occurring. But in terms of existing building regulations, I would have to double check to see what resources might be available. But in terms of existing building regulations, I would have to double check to see what resources might be available.
I think I'd be curious to know if there might be something existing um, as a starting place for that one.
And and just a thought, is that a part of the local hazard mitigation plan?
Do you uh, do you mean by soft story buildings analysis?
Yes.
I I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that for you.
I'm going back to the um, public comment, just trying to follow up. Oh, one question, and this is for CRC. Is there a, and it might be in our staff report, the printed copy that I have does not have the same, the. The documents that were in Spanish, I did not find the same documents in English. And so I wanted to find out, is that a part of the staff report or a link in the staff report?
Mayor Taylor, I I believe you might be referring to the workshop summary report. So yes, that was provided as part of the June three packet for the Planning Commission. So please refer to that, that packet for the English workshop summary.
And the, the June third Planning Commission document has the English outreach for the EJ. And then does it provide the translation for the Spanish?
No, at the June three meeting, uh, we did not have the Spanish completed uh, by that time. So uh, that's why we are transmitting the Spanish version this evening.
What I would like to do is read the Spanish version, but I am not bilingual, so I'm just trying to figure out how to have a translator copy.
Uh, they they're identical.
Okay, then. I didn't print everything out for my staff report.
Yes.
And in the packet we have, it was only in Spanish, the summaries that we were seeing.
Yes, um, so the, the packet this evening includes the Spanish workshop summary document. The June three packet included the English workshop summary document, and the documents are ident- identical, just in different languages.
Thank you. Okay, I think the the rest of the clarifying questions for. The public comment I could address later. Um, just wanted to see if any other council members, Vice Mayor Combs, or anyone else had any um, follow-up questions for staff. Clarifying questions? Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. So just to clarify for myself and and maybe for the public who's catching up here, um, so sea level rise is fully held within the safety element. It's not reflected here in the environmental justice element?
During the community outreach, there was um, the topics definitely overlap, and there was definitely a discussion from community members talking about. Concerns for sea level rise and planning for climate resiliency, and that of course, uh, dovetailed into like safe sanitary and stable homes. So there definitely is blending between the elements and they have close linkages.
Thank you. Another question, number two in the priorities that were shared by CRC. Thank you for all the research there. Um, it talked about air quality generally. There's indoor and outdoor. Was the indoor component reflected in those conversations? I can imagine too, that indoor quality is reflected in. Safe and sanitary homes, but was curious if, where you found that fitting within the buckets?
I th- I think that that was mostly captured in, in the safe sanitary and stable homes conversations. Um. I think that folks were concerned primarily about. Outdoor air quality and pollution from wildfire smoke, vehicles, um, mostly outdoor sources. I think that that's not because they're not concerned about indoor air quality. I think they think of it more in terms of molds, um, and gas appliances maybe. But I think that a public awareness around the threats that indoor air quality can pose is still. Very much an emerging field of research, and I think that is not on a lot of people's radar yet. Um, so yeah.
Thank you. Uh, it was helpful to you. I'm glad that the environmental justice, uh, Cal Environmental Justice Screen was shared here, and one of the. Factors that ranked quite high for the Bellhaven Community was lead on housing. Um, I think it was the ninety-seventh percentile for the state, very, very high. Uh, did that come up at all in the conversations, or might that also be? More of a nascent conversation that maybe folks are still learning about the the risk of lead on their homes?
I think that everyone you ask about lead will be concerned about it. I think that the. Question for folks is themselves not knowing necessarily in their own home whether that is a concern or or not that they should have. Um, I think that those numbers that are derived from Calenviron screen probably use uh, a proxy like home age. To get those sort of numbers, and there is a lot of very old housing in the Bellhaven neighborhood. And so that is where the threat lies. I think if you wanted to dig more deeply and and see how many ho- homes actually had. Lead problems, it would take, you know, more extensive analysis. Um, but I think that that's something that was on everyone's radar as a concern, but them not knowing whether or not their house fell into that. Category, or if that was actually a threat to them personally, was was uh, an open question.
Thank you. And one last question, and apologies if this is reflected in the report. For the the work you all did, did you capture the age ranges of of folks who were in the meetings? I'm curious if there were youth participating, if there were elderly folks participating, what the, what the community of folks was that you got to participate in these workshops?
I don't think we kept specific track. Uh, I know for a fact that there was young adults there. Um. There were also children. We provided childcare services, so there were children that were doing color activities and stuff like that. But I think that there was a broad representation across age groups, um, with our seniors being. Very well represented, I think, which to me is is very heartening and a good sign. Um, and also the fact that there were some youth there, it's hard to get their attention sometimes. So it's really. Impressive to me when they have the presence of mind to turn out for these discussions and participate, and they often bring a very unique perspective. In the group that I was facilitating, for example, there was a couple of young folks who uh, were probably younger than me. Um, and they had just very interesting. Interactions around, you know, what growing up in the Bellhaven neighborhood had been for them. The like struggles with housing that their families had gone through and that they'd seen growing up and were reflecting on how that impacted them personally. And their concerns about not being able to live in the community that they grew up in. Uh, when they, when they wanted to, they they could, they felt like they didn't have the option to, to move back or to stay in the community. Because they weren't able to, to afford to do so. So I think that the perspectives that were shared were really valuable. Um, and could probably be gleaned a bit from the comments that are made in the worksheet and that are in the summary. Uh, but we didn't track specifically the age of folks.
But here, it's helpful to hear that there was a range of folks, and I think speaks highly to the kind of collaborative welcoming environment that you and the team at CRC set up. So folks felt comfortable and uh, interested in engaging, so thank you.
So following up a little bit more on the indoor air quality, which I think we're all um, highly aware of at this point because of um, our. Environmental work um, within the city. Um, there is, as I'm sure you know, um, new studies out that are um, point to the high rate of asthma. Within um, some of the underserved communities, especially those um. Who have um, gas stoves and smaller spaces. And so um, one of the things that I would like to see more explicit language in, if it um. Would be um, in the policies and programs about indoor air pollution from gas appliances, um, that the. We focus on indoor air as well as the outside air. And that we actually have the four point five million dollar grant from the state and are in the process of um, initiating our. Building electrification program within the Bellhaven neighborhood. So I think that that's a very um, positive step that is already. Um. Can be reflected in the report. Uh, but because that there's so much, there's, there was just a new study out in May. Um, which talks about the nitrogen dioxide um, from burning gas um, is greater in the small homes that it actually permeates throughout the entire house. Um, it's, so it's not just the person who's cooking on the stove, it is the higher. And that um, there are higher rates of, much higher rates of asthma and other respiratory conditions. So, thank you. Um. Going back to the sea le- the safety element and sea level rise. Because this, I'm a, I'm gathering that this part of the document um, was not touched from the earlier versions. And I would request that um, you consider adding um, more of a, a correlation between sea level rise and climate change. Um, which really is left very um, much to the reader to make that connection, and I think it would be worthwhile. To explicitly say that in the safety element. I have um. Additional comments, but I will, I don't know where we're having comments versus um.
My, my apologies for not clarifying that. Initially, I started with questions from public comment, um, and then went into my own questions. So it's, we are open for questions now. Unless you just want to provide a comment. Does anyone else have questions?
I I actually have a few other questions. Um, and gotta keep checking in with Vice Mayor Combs to see if you have questions. Okay, thank you. Um, so I want to, and what the, the theme that I saw in the priorities for the community. To me are similar to what was found in social health determinants. Um, to me, it's almost the same. It's, it's economics. It's housing security, um, it's a- access to food and to healthcare. And so thinking along those terms around the differences, and I said this earlier, about emergency preparedness versus disaster preparedness. Are we looking at that as one or two separate initiatives? Because I know there is mention in the safety element of a disaster plan. So, I'm not sure if that's for CRC or a question for our staff. Or for M Group.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I hear the question is like, does the safety element make a distinction between emergency preparedness and disaster preparedness? I'd have to flip through the document to, I'll do that to try to find that answer. I also welcome uh, project team members from M Group if they are more quick to see this on their computer um, to respond as well.
Sure, thank you, Calvin. I think can jump in there. Um, there is, there is a difference in the program response in terms of. There's discussion, there's a program, um, S one thirty-five about disaster preparedness, which also involves um, collaboration organizing with. GOC volunteer groups, public safety agencies, and emergency preparedness, um. Is a little bit more, I think, regional focus in terms of working with um, first responders. Evacuation routes, items like that. So um, they're under. I think the same umbrella, but looking at programs, there's a slightly different program response with S one thirty-five, big disaster preparedness, and then. Um, a little bit lower on that page, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, focusing on emergency preparedness.
Thank you.
And I apologize, this is page thirty-seven on the stage. I realize I didn't write that, um, thirty-seven in the safety.
Thank you. So my, uh, next question is for staff. Um, there was a comment um, during public comment about strengthening. The language and the policies and the programs for our safety element specifically around updating our hazards. So between two thousand and thirteen and now, our hazard conditions have changed for the city. So just wanted to find out, um, what recommendations do you have besides, I know you have in here, I think it's SB. Two seventy-two, and there was one other state bill that you included, but just wanted to find out about um, programs that the city could potentially. Um, implement that would address the updated hazards for the city.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So on page ten of the safety element, I'd just like to point to that because we do have a summary of some of the. Senate bills of recent years, um, that the safety element is seeking to address. Uh, also, as you're aware, we have our local hazard mitigation plan, and also the county currently is up uh, in the process of starting to. Update for the next local hazard mitigation plan. So there are opportunities to include some of that information as well in, in our document. In terms of expanding on the background information, a lot of the, the graphics that you see at the end of the safety element regarding. Like liquefaction, earthquakes, all those types of different data analyses, those did come as part of the last, our current multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. So we can look at opportunities to enhance background from this already existing research, um, as it's available today.
Thank you. And then how, how will the local hazard mitigation plan work with the safety element? Or is it the other way around? The safety element works with the local hazard mitigation plan? Cause I know it's a on- ongoing document.
Yes, they're ongoing documents. So our safety element, of course, is our, our cities, part of our city's general plan and directs our, our work. The county multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan takes a, there's a part one and a part two, where there's a broader county. Um, analysis, and then there's also a planning-specific partner annex, which Menlo Park does have a part in. So they do work in tandem. They have different apertures, uh, to use a word that was from our June two thousand and twenty-three study session. Different levels of focus, but are all um, being explored and implemented. And um, just to know also that the local hazard mitigation plan is explicitly mentioned um, as like a complimentary document as part of our safety element. It's towards the very beginning of the document on page four.
Ten. Yeah, I see. I was able to find it in the, in the document. I was, I found it. I just have a one more question about the safety element, um, that's related to noise. And I do not believe there was an update there. Or was an update to the noise portion of the document?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Uh, at this moment, there is no update to the noise uh, element of part of this combined open space conservation, noise and safety element document. Um, this update to our safety element is strategically focused on responding to those. Updates in state law, uh, which didn't include updates to the safety element.
The, the one piece where I see that the environmental justice element. Needs to direct updates to the noise element is because the neighborhood is surrounded by highways and freeways. It's surrounded by noise, not just on the ground, but also above. We're part of the flight path for at least two major airports and at least one of the private airports. So if there, and I know that for folks who live close to the San Francisco airport, there are mitigation measures as far as replacement of windows. There are some things in place. Um, however, it's only for homes that are on the flight um, departure path. It doesn't account for arrivals, and we're usually on the arrival path. But just one part, I think, needs to be included because the area is noisy and I don't know, there has been some noise testing, hasn't there been? I believe there has been. City Manager Murphy, do you recall? If there was some level of noise monitoring that was done, maybe not for the whole area, but for one area?
Let's see, Mayor, are you referring to the, or that the SFO did with the temporary noise monitors a few years ago?
Yes, but I thought there was one else besides that, too.
I'm not recalling that. So if there's something that you want to help to remind me about, feel free. Otherwise, I'm definitely remembering information from a few years ago.
I think, I think you're correct. So it's just the SFO.
Yes, there, there, there may indeed be some others. It's just not that I'm, I'm readily recalling right this instant.
Thank you.
I, I will say though, this on the topic of the noise element, there are references to the, to the surrounding freeways, to the to the surrounding airports in the existing noise element. So I think if there is a topic that you're saying where the environmental justice element should inform the noise element, we may want to kind of capture that in the environmental justice element at this point in time as opposed to embarking down the process of amending our noise element at this time. So I think there might be a way of capturing the intent behind some of your comments in the environmental justice element without actually needing to amend the noise ordinance, the noise element.
Thank you. And that would, that definitely would be helpful to have the reflect exactly what the city manager said. I will say this. With, without looking at the data from a noise report, how would we know what extreme noise is in the community? And I know there's a section in the element that's, I don't want to quote it verbatim, but it talks about what excessive noise is for community members to experience. So, and it's not to change what the decimal number is, but it's how would we know if we never, if we didn't monitor it? What extreme noise would be, just like we know what extreme heat is? Does that make sense, what I just said?
Um, let's see. So I, I believe that there was quite a bit of noise monitoring done when the last noise element was adopted. There is also going to be upcoming noise study that the city is embarking on as it relates to the new Bell Haven Community Campus and the air source heat pumps. So the, the city is already going to be doing a noise study that I think at least addresses one aspect that you're talking about. So it, it might be best if, if we could have a, maybe a follow-up conversation on this specifically to figure out the best way of attempting to address it. But there, there are a couple of things in the works. I think the most tangible one is going to be the noise study that's going to be prepared as part of the air source heat pumps at the new Bell Haven Community Campus.
That, that works for me. I'm having a follow-up conversation. I just wanted to bring it up in the meeting because with the increased population, the increased development increases the noise. And also the Palo Alto Airport is looking to expand. So I'm just thinking about the noise level increasing. And looking at quality of life for residents there, if it's noisy all the time. Okay, that's my last question on the the safety element. Now going to the EJ. Does anybody else have questions on the safety element? The big question for me, and my guess is that may, maybe someone does not have an answer to this. When I think about the environmental justice element, I think that basically how much is it all going to cost is the big question for me. What do we all need? And so if there's opportunity as a part of direction, if there's support from council, I'm not looking for a number. It's going to take five million dollars to buy a hundred thousand trees. I'm looking for the full package, what the top priorities are for community members and what that dollar amount would be. Because to me, the total value would help me determine how to address the immediate priorities, those tops three, but also looking at down the line, what can we do in one year? What can we do in three years? What can we do in five years? So I'm looking at the big picture and it partly is because most of the community members who are still alive and still living there have endured it for decades. And I'm looking for how we can improve quality of life sooner for folks before they pass. So that's my big question. And that's actually my last question. So if anybody wants to kick off the comments, I will pass the mic.
Thank you. So first of all, I was really impressed with the report and the everything that's gone into it. So thank you so much. And again, as has been stated, just hearing about the community involvement, both in the meeting tonight and also through community members, it's been, it's really impressive how much has been done. I do have comments, and if this is not the appropriate level, please do let me know. Essentially, what I've done is I went through the table EJ eight and do have some individual comments on these. For example, on two point three, which is currently, which is advanced jurisdictional wide collaboration to continually refine nature-based climate solutions that sequester carbon, manage stormwater, reduce sea level risks, restore ecosystems, mitigate flooding and conserve biodiversity. It says that that is going to be removed and that underserved communities are prioritized in two point one. I'm one, I'm thinking that this might be worth saving as something that is cross-jurisdictional and a regional program. So rather than advanced jurisdiction-wide collaboration, it would be advanced regional collaboration. And I don't know that I need an answer tonight. These are just my comments. I actually saw, actually, under the two point one policy seemed to be a place where it could be on both indoor and outdoor air quality could be noted. And then again, under the policy two point seven. And you may know others. On page EJ forty two, policy program idea, ID two point A. I was, it occurs to me that gasoline fuel stations near residences might be another example of identified significant stationary pollutant generations. On two point C, which is conduct proactive education about outreach and air quality and protective actions that can be taken to minimize exposure. That again seemed like a place that the indoor-outdoor might fit and the four-point, the program with the building electrification. And actually, one other point to tout about the building electrification is that the heat pumps, as I'm sure you know, also provide cooling. I was wondering on page EJ forty three, program two point I, what is the no smoking ordinance for downtown? And if this isn't an appropriate time, that's fine. I just, it's listed here and I had not heard of that before.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Nash. We'll have to double check that. I do know that our municipal code does have regulations regarding smoking generally, and that might be a reference to that.
Okay, the reason why I was wondering is it said that it was in the works, I believe. Items in progress. And that's what was, I, yes, I believe that there is a no smoking.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Keep in mind, some, some of these in-progress items have been made over maybe like a year or so. So there might be some opportunities for us to update language.
Whatever you decide. Thank you. And then, let's see. Under, on page EJ forty nine, policy five point one. Because five point one and five point two were combined, I was, five point two, which is going to be combined into five point one says, maintain and develop safe and sanitary housing across all locations and affordability ranges. That was combined into five point one, which says, prioritize housing programs that provide and maintain safe and sanitary homes in underserved communities. I was wondering if that might become particularly in underserved communities since five point two seems to indicate that it's across all locations. Again, we'll just leave that up to you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Program five point A, identify and resolve, to the extent feasible, any potential toxic soil contamination in residential developments, particularly in underserved communities. In looking at the action table, I think I've got the answer, but it's, I would think that that's not the city's responsibility, but in fact, the property owner or developer's responsibility to remediate. And so I want to make sure that that's clearly not the city's responsibility. On five point E, which is long, I will not read it. This is on page EJ fifty, the end. The last few lines, there's, there are lines on my small, basically. On additional, this does not, I think it needs some editing to make more sense, just on additional opportunities to promote the program, including in conjunction with BMR ownership units who conduct this work to facilitate workshops for residents in underserved communities. Seven point eight, which is all meetings should be agendized. An agenda is item located in underserved communities should take place in a location easily accessible. I just wanted to give kudos to the staff that you did it tonight. So really good job to have the satellite, the Bell Haven Community Campus be a satellite venue. And I, there it was. That's one of the goals. So thank you. Actually, I may have more comments on the action, but let me go to someone else at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. My comments are a bit higher level, but I, they do connect over to this chart. So I'm glad that you brought our attention there. First big bucket item accountability. I really appreciate that that was reflected by CRC, by community feedback, by staff is something, and but the planning commission too, as something that needs to be a priority. And so the three things I would love to see us make sure we're focusing on as we move forward with environmental justice element are specific metrics that are numeric in some way that we can track and say, how far along are we to reaching our goals? Two, a timeline. I appreciate that we have shorter term or longer term. But I think, you know, long term could mean two years, it could mean seven, 10, 20 years. And so even more definition to what kind of timeline we have. And of course, that needs to be updated as we get to my next major item, which is prioritization. But so metrics, timeline, and then thinking somehow about how we include budget here. I know that that's a tall order to get specific on things that we don't know when they'll happen and how, but a general sense of what is the resource intensivity, intensiveness, there we go, of these different efforts, I think would be helpful to have upfronts as we're thinking about these efforts. Oh, so we do have that a little bit in, in the costs, so high, medium, low. But I wonder if there's more specificity there that would be helpful to explain of is low, does low mean ten thousand dollars? And does high mean 10 million? Or what is the range that we're dealing with there? Great. So that's accountability. So I want to see that in the metrics and in how we're tracking timeline budget. And also, last one here on reporting. So I'm, I'm glad to see the, the request to do yearly reporting. I also, I think that accountability, we can become more accountable if we're holding those meetings in the Bell Haven Community directly. And so the nod two to having these meetings moving forward in the campus center, I think would be wonderful to see. So after accountability, next big bucket, prioritization. I'm really grateful for CRC's work. The hard work of saying, out of all the things in the universe that we want to see here, what are the top priorities? And I think it's very illuminating to have this list of three items in particular upfront around housing, air quality and food. But I, while we have this great specificity here now in the public comments, I, I think that having kind of prioritization reflected also in the EJ element itself, in the, one of the big tables that's in here, as well as then in table, this implementation guide would be helpful. Because frankly, it felt like a laundry list of a lot of, lot of really important items and work that needs to happen. But if I myself was having difficulty navigating it, I can only imagine for community members what it might be like to, to go through this. And so I would like us to see, like us to maybe now orient around these priorities that we have, center them and how we're laying out those tables that are in the EJ element itself, as well as the implementation guide. And see if we can simplify and streamline how information is there. I was looking at the implementation guide. There's twenty five pages and each page has between three to eight or seven different items on it. And I think that's going to be hard for the community as well as for staff when we're asking staff to really meaningfully think about the timelines, the budgets, the metrics that they'll use for each of those. And so I, I would like us to see us focus on those three. And also, so I know it's connected to the safety element, but sea level rise and, you know, thinking about safe and stable homes, you won't have a home if your home is underwater. And so making sure that that's centered in this cross dynamic that we have between the EJ elements and the safety element is really important. As well as seismic issues. Thank you. Another one here on this chart. So we talked about prioritization. I'm grateful for this implementation section that kind of looks at who, who has the power in different situations, the, the power map levers of change. So is it the city who's on lead versus county versus who? So I'm grateful to see that. And I want to make sure that that who's, who's in control and who has what kind of agency is centered and ongoing feedback to the community too. For example, I know that there's been a lot of feedback of wanting to see a full grocery store. As, as part of what we, we want to achieve for improving access to fresh and healthy foods. I know that there are some things the city can do, like the fantastic work of the council to advocate for a grocery store with the Willow Village Project. But there are also some limitations about, you know, if safety doesn't want to come, it's going to be really hard to get them to come as a city. But there might be other efforts that the city can play a role in with the, the farmers markets and other things like that. Or working with the county to advocate for more outreach on SNAP benefits and EBT benefits. And so I, I think continued elevating of, of trying to make that clear for community members about where, where is the lever of change that can be pulled? Be important for the public as well as staff to make sure that the things that are really centered in EJ element are the things that the city has the most oversight. the most oversight over, to make sure that we are actually tracking progress towards those things, while also holding our partners, whether that be the county, the state, others also accountable can be included there. Next big bucket, accessibility. I think that kind of connects back to the clarification of simplifying some of this implementation guide and environmental justice element. I think, you know, I love the idea of having the website regularly updated, including all the public feedback there in separate links, so they have the EJ element link, the public feedback that's been received so far, and other things clearly delineated on that website. And making sure there's some easy way to shortcut to get into that space if folks are having difficulty navigating the website. I'm not sure if that was any of the feedback that was received about how easy it is to find this kind of information. But I wonder if some kind of shortcuts, some kind of easy links in will help. Looking at the environmental justice element too, I'm grateful that we have the different neighborhood reviews, looking at each different community, but I wonder if that might be more successful living outside of the EJ element itself, in hopes and an aspiration of making this a legible, readable document. Is that something else that could live on the big website that includes everything? That's just a thought of how to further streamline and simplify this. Yes, that's on accessibility. And lastly, I want to uplift a few of the comments. It was really helpful to read the direct comments provided in Spanish here, but in others, so the idea of meeting at MPCC directly. There was also a lot of comments about specific programs that folks needed more access to, understanding what are the PG and E utility supports and financial aid that can be offered? What are SNAP benefits? What are EBT? That's not in control of the city. The city doesn't have power over that. But it makes me wonder, what can we as the city, can we as the council, the city staff, community-based organizations, and the county, others, do to help make those programs even more accessible? So the folks who need that support are able to find it excessively. And I just want to take one moment to expand out. We're talking about health impacts here, and I'm really grateful for this conversation. The life expectancy in Bellhaven is at least five years shorter than the rest of Menlo Park and, or the rest of the county, and that is unacceptable. And so I'm so grateful to see the city staff, our council, the community-based organizations, the community who lives across Menlo Park, not just in Bellhaven, recognizing that we need to address these inequities and that this plan is one really important tool on the way to making sure that everyone in our community has a access to a a safe, healthy, vibrant life. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr and Councilmember Nash. Any comments from Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and just huge thanks to staff and CRC and most importantly, to all of the community members who didn't just participate over the last two years, but who had enough morsel of hope that they didn't give up after decades of feeling like they had said the same thing over and over again, and nothing had happened. So we hear you, and going through kind of the slide of what prompts are for council, did the process over the past year, years result in appropriate refinements to the EJ element? I think overall, yes. I mean, it's tremendous, the content and the amount of work that went into this document. And so far, as far as the environmental justice is going, I support any kind of refinements that my colleagues are saying that reflect the sentiment of the community that worked so hard to get this to this point. Does the action guide serve as a good implementation tool? A tremendous document. I do also agree with my colleague, Councilmember Dorr, that it's, there's a tension between getting everything and reflecting what we've heard and putting in all these ideas and making it accessible and easy to navigate and implementable. So I know that's a bit of a threading the needle exercise for staff. And I think if it's not painful, then you're not working, you're not doing it, but I'm guessing it was painful. So I commend you on what you got there. I do think that the prioritization needs to kind of live somewhere over the long term, and we have kind of the three starting ones. But there needs to be some mechanism to kind of, where do we go from here? Because it's really just the beginning. I reflect back on the transportation master plan. We had tiers that were established in that plan that tried to kind of take all of the matrices and the different attributes and the rankings of each and the scores, and then kind of created a tier one, tier two, tier three, that staff could then kind of work through and kind of signal to the community of which things were going to kind of get attention when. And I think that's been really helpful, especially even as council member, when a resident says, you know, when is this going to be addressed? I can say, well, actually, it's a tier, you know, it's a tier two, not because it's not important, they're all important, but because, you know, of all these factors. And so I would urge staff to think creatively, to look at our other master planning documents and which ones have been working for you. But I think, as has been said, you know, it's going to be the showing and the doing, not the telling that gets this done, which really goes down to the budget and the money. And so in terms of where we go in terms of reporting and checking in, this has to be this living, constant iterative process. And I think as, when I think about the most important thing that the city does, it's, or when a resident knows they're getting what they want, it's when that dollar is in the budget. And that dollar gets in the budget from potentially the CIP or potentially council goal setting, or potentially master planning documents. And those have to get reviewed prior to the CIP, prior to the budgeting process. So whatever process the city staff goes through, leading up to the budget, the check-in on the EJ has, that's what has to drive it. Because at the end of the day, none of this is going to happen unless there's dollars assigned and staff lined up to go. So I would highly do whatever you can, whether it's aligning it with the housing element report or with the CIP, but to make sure that's an annual check-in. A few other comments, I'm going to try to keep it a little on the higher level. There's such tremendous wealth of information in here and in all the comments that all the community members gave. As these things go from conceptual policies to programs to actions to ideas, I just want to encourage staff, while we have an amazing garden of seeds and ideas from the community, there might be things that someone just didn't think of. Because, you know, whatever reason, there's a couple of things that kind of popped into my head when I was reading through these that I've heard over the years. One being connecting the Bellhaven Community Campus with the Bayfront Community and like an overpass over there. We're going to be accumulating a large community amenities bucket. And that might be something the community wants in terms of connecting communities. I don't know, I'm not going to say what they want. But I just want to make sure that these ideas that have been brought up over the years don't get lost. The Dumbarton Rails to Trails idea, when we talk about residents in the Bellhaven Community or in the Bayfront getting fresh air and exercise, that's a concept, because who knows when Dumbarton Corridor is coming. But in the meantime, maybe there's a way to create a walking path there, if that's what the community wants, but I didn't see that in there. A lot of these, especially these top three priorities that we're starting off with, a concept of like guaranteed basic income, where you're actually giving residents a stipend of like five hundred dollars a month to spend, kind of whatever they see they need that money on, might be an idea that is worth pursuing and maybe not. I know other cities up and down in the state are looking at, actually around the country, are looking at that and seeing some successes. In terms of the shoulds and the musts, again, I think this is another one of those tension things where we want to set the right expectations. We want to actually do the things we're going to say we do, but we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner if there's like unintended consequences. So like the bathrooms, there was one about like, there should be bathrooms at every park. Like, conceptually, that sounds great, but that might not actually be desired. So I think as staff looks at the shoulds and the musts to really kind of, again, I don't know how to resolve that tension, but I would caution of overpromising with absolute terms, like all bathrooms and whatnot. And then, I think overall, I, I I think the best thing we can do is kind of stay out of the way and just let the community's words speak for themselves and get some early wins and deliveries in here to show folks that invested so much of their time and heart into this, that we're listening and that we mean what we say we're going to do. I do have a comment about the safety element, but I don't know if you want me to wait on that or just go for it. Okay. The, in terms of the safety element, I know that there have been folks writing in about the biosafety levels. I personally really want to make sure that whatever gets in the safety element, because it's part of the general plan, is really evidence-based and not just kind of reactionary. I would prefer that the council handle that topic as a standalone kind of study session where we get folks teaching us about, you know, what are the regulations, who would be doing this, before it rises to the level of getting into the safety element alongside fires and earthquakes and whatever. So I am personally not necessarily in support of the recommendation to add that to the safety element. It doesn't mean I don't want to learn more about it. But it just seems to me premature to put that in there without doing like a forum to hear more data. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I'd like to echo some curiosity around and some desire to understand more about biosafety levels and hazards there. And so wishing to maybe create a space through a study session as an initial way to have a conversation about what are the actual risks? And also maybe to look at, are there model policies that South San Francisco, which has so much life sciences and what other folks have done, and how they're conceiving of the risk from their staff? Something like that feels like a useful starting place before jumping to including it in the housing element, or the, sorry, safety element. Thank you.
Thank you both for your comment. Now just jump in on this same topic. One of the concerns that I have is we already have a life science area that's near three neighborhoods, three residential neighborhoods. So I'm not sure if that's the same in South San Francisco. But for me, that, it's not, it's not in South San Francisco. So for me, it's it's extremely important because we have biosciences near residential areas. So if in order to move this further, I would be in support of a study session on this topic. Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs, I am actually going to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Nash, just so I can step out for a few moments, and I'll be right back. I've just been requested to have a break, so we can take a ten-minute break. Does that work for everyone? Thank you.
All right. Having our city council back at our virtual and in-person dais. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you all for your patience during our short break. And at this time, we will go to Vice Mayor Combs.
Mayor Taylor, just invited Vice Mayor to rejoin if you want to go to another city council member while we wait for...
Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, Vice Mayor Combs, if you're ready to provide feedback or questions or both.
I don't have any feedback or questions at this time. Thanks.
Can staff put up the three questions that you had that you needed from council for direction? Just want to make sure that we are providing what you need. Thank you. Councilmember Nash, you had some additional comments?
Okay. Thank you. So looking at the action or the implementation guide, I had two comments. Looking at the 2.5.7, explore reductions to parking requirements with the intent to encourage balanced live, work, and play environments. That made me think about circulation, which has been mentioned by Councilmember Woolison with definitely the Dunbarton Rail Corridor and somehow navigating across the Samtrans tracks to connect the Bellhaven Community Campus and Bellhaven with the new developments and Tide High School in that area. There's also Haven Avenue, which is really, really isolated. So when thinking about the circulation, if this is a place where we can actually move some of the transportation, both public transportation for these areas and also circulation, better accessibility across District One, that would really be worthwhile. And then I definitely do want to take a look at biosafety. I agree that it's not yet time to put it into the permanent document, but definitely have a desire to do that. And then on anti-displacement strategy, I was really happy to see that that is one of the top priorities and think that, as I think has been outlined in here, the access to tenant education and rights and access to legal counsel. There are plenty of groups around that are very good at representing renters in these situations. That's would definitely be a high priority. Information on the rental assistance, that's something that I think all of us probably get asked regularly. And just to the extent that we can do anything prior to, there's talk of the eviction, people who have been evicted and the relocation assistance. One of the things that I'm hearing a lot about and I imagine others are too, is basically where people are leaving, they're essentially being bullied and just getting very strong messages and they give up before they're even evicted. So to the extent that we can do anything there, again, whatever we can do to prevent displacement and do it early would be beneficial. And I am also interested in the soft story buildings. If there's anything we can do there, I don't know how that plays into it. I don't think there's as much in District One. I know in District Three and District Four, there's definitely a lot of soft story. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I had staff put this slide up just to make sure that we are providing the feedback that they need to keep this process moving forward. Wanted to support something Councilmember Woolison brought up, and that was the guarantee, exploring guaranteeing income. I think that can actually also be a tool in an anti-displacement strategy. I have some feedback about the overall. And this would actually, I believe, yes, this process over the past year resulted in the appropriate refinements to the EJ element. I support the work that staff, CRC, and the M Group has done. And also think a little more work needs to be done with the safety element, but I'll address that later. Does the action guide serve as a good implementation tool to advance the EJ? I do agree with it. I think you have done a great job and since this is a part of our study session, so we're not voting on anything, but I think that there's opportunity for staff to come back with the feedback that you've provided and then the city council, of course, read that information and then see if there's anything else we'd like to do. But the answer for that question for me is yes. And then staff intends to update the EJ and safety element based on feedback received and is noted in the staff report. Are there other items for consideration or inclusion? For me, the answer is yes. So I need to find that list. I think one I've already stated, which is the adding indoor air quality to the list. And then also something that I do not believe was on the list, and that is access to health care and health care resources. We do not have any place to get our blood pressure checked or even to get a prescription filled. I think that is an important tool to have a healthy community. I've already provided my comment about the soft soil and liquefaction and then groundwater rise as well. And I'm just hopeful that there's an opportunity to have a map, just like we have a flood map, that there would be a soft soil map or a liquefaction map or a groundwater map. Another displacement strategy I was thinking of to add is, and I think this may even be in the document already, but keeping track of renters and homeowners, a rental registry. The city, the city's Housing Commission did have on its work plan, I think it was in 2018, about creating displacement strategies. I think that's what it was called. Tenant Protections is what it was called, and in 2019, the council did not support it. I'm curious as to how many people we've lost since then, because of five years, if we would have had something in place. Not sure if there's a place where the numbers are being captured as far as who has left Menlo Park, who's been pushed out. I think it will help with the stopgap measures around our anti-displacement policies because we just know people are leaving. We don't know exactly why. The other, and I have to bring this up because it's extremely important to community members, and it may have been brought up at the CCC team meetings, and that is access to higher quality education. Education is a social health determinant, and I know that the Bellhaven neighborhood, and I believe is Haven Avenue in Ravenswood and Redwood City, but at any rate, community members want access to higher quality education, and to me, this is a part of the social health determinant. As far as infrastructure, and I think this was already brought up in the document as one of the programs, and that is access to Wi-Fi. And the city already does this. It is not a policy. Maybe it needs to be a program, and that is with community engagement and making sure we include all of our community-based organizations. That's the Neighborhood Association, Bellhaven Empowered, the Bellhaven Community Development Fund, et cetera. Something that we used to have, which I believe is important and may have been brought up in some of the feedback, and that is the monthly newsletter. I think it was helpful because of the access to Wi-Fi and then also not everyone uses a cellphone. Information sometimes has to be printed and shared with each household, and I'm not sure if that was actually mailed to each household or if it was distributed door-to-door. The door-to-door, I think, is a healthier way to do it, not just for exercise, but also just engaging with the public is a way, and then also partnering with a community-based organization to actually get it done, one of the local ones. See, I've already brought up disaster and emergency preparedness plan. And because our number of businesses, I believe in District One, has increased, I think our business district needs to be included in the emergency plan or the disaster preparedness plan. With the cooling centers, and I believe we have a policy around it, but definitely cooling centers need to be a part of the EJ element, and that is also air quality. So bad air, warm weather. I'm not sure what that, what the temperature needs to be, and maybe the CRC can provide some feedback, but the extreme heat in District One is going to be different than it is in District Two, Three, or Four, primarily because of the tree canopy. So taking that into consideration, so 90 degrees in one area of the city may feel like 100 in another area. So maybe that could be a factor, one of the metrics as to when the cooling center opens. And then also because the city, there's no way for the city to take care of everyone. Partnerships with churches, churches may be a cooling center as well, I think will be healthy. The one piece that I've learned about the city being the leader in a conversation or the lead partner in something, that folks are more likely to utilize that space. So, and plus because the city has the resources to actually put the information out faster than anyone. So a partnership with a church might be an option as far as a substitute cooling center. And this is a question that doesn't have to be answered this evening, but is extreme heat considered a natural disaster? Been trying to find out, but that's just a question to look at answering another time. And I believe that is my list. Thank you. And I support the comments and direction that our council has provided. And Vice Mayor Combs, I'm keep coming back to you because you're not sitting here with us, so I just wanted to make sure that, to include you.
Thank you. I definitely feel included at this moment, so don't have a comment or question.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorr.
I appreciated the specific call-out, Mayor Taylor, that you made about universal income. Something that I wonder is even a little bit more in the jurisdiction of a city is deciding about rent control as a way to limit the expenses that our residents have. And I know that that's one of the things that's been included in the anti-displacement, but I want to elevate that. And also, as I was looking through the EJ table and the EJ element, it often, the lead department is the city, the city is the city. I think on something like rent control, the onus is also on the council to have the agency to bring something forward and then to vote supportively on something like that. And so I want to make sure that the agency of this and other policies comes back to people who are sitting on this dais too, because the... because, you know, we affect the policy in a really direct way, along with, with city staff and how it's developed, but so, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. While you were speaking, especially when you were talking about the newsletter and then all the things we want to have happen in Bellhaven and everything, it got me thinking, I think this has been raised at some point about having some kind of direct employee, because I know that, like a lot of our, this is managed by all departments, and like every department has, it's, it's cross department work, this EJ, but having like a point person, maybe even someone like a, almost want to say like a concierge that sits at the BHCC and is there to answer residents' questions about, you know, what are my legal, who do I call to figure out my legal rights? Like, when is a sound wall going to be built, or what is going on with, like somewhat, a, a person that is known to the community, maybe it's the person that does the newsletter? And so, I don't know if that was considered someone to help kind of drive this and be the liaison with the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. I'm definitely supportive of that, and not sure what that would take or what it looks like. I have a, actually a question based on what Councilmember Dorr just brought up around rent control. Is rent control one of the anti-displacement measures?
Yes, it is.
And and that was one of the top three priorities for the community, or? Is that one of three? Safe, stable housing, so then, yes.
Yes, so the, the anti-displacement strategy, I believe, is Program 5G in the Table EJ Eight, and amongst the community recommendations that came out of the May 2024 workshops, rent control is one of those additional to-be-studied items that is listed.
And so, the rent control would, would not be considered a part of the safe and stable housing?
It is a, it is a program that would contribute towards that goal of safe, sanitary, and stable housing.
Thank you, and I have not vetted this question with the city manager, but I will ask anyways. The, what is the feasibility of having rent control a topic on the agenda for City Council this year? Before September? Or by September?
Yeah, I, I, I think, Mayor, it'd be best if we could actually talk and look through, as we, you and I have talked multiple times, there is the upcoming council break. There are a number of other things coming forward. We'd have to then compare that to other topics. Is, is it feasible? Yes. That's a matter of what the preparation is and what the, what the, what the substance of the discussion is, because it will involve, attract quite a bit of attention. So, I, I would not take it lightly. I'd, I'd rather that we prepare for it properly, but it, it's feasible. There'd just be total trade-offs to, to be able to achieve that.
Thank you. I, I, it's not listed on here, but it is in the staff report, and that is a discussion around funding for the environmental justice element. And one piece that I do want to bring up now, and that is around the safety element, a part of the discussion, I think, if, and this is maybe a city manager question again, if the safety element, if the City Council believes that the safety element needs a little more time, does that, that obviously would require some funding too. So, my question is, does that need to be a part of the conversation around funding for the EJ? Do we need to include the safety element as well?
Let's see, again, I may need to understand a little bit. There's, as it relates to the safety element, if there, there are certain aspects of the safety element for which we're trying to bring it into compliance with state law, and that was, as Mr. Chan said earlier, the Housing Element Update Project is comprised of three components, the Housing Element Update, the creation of the Environmental Justice element, and then the Safety Element Update. We're trying to accomplish those updates to the elements to, to bring us as best we can into com, compliance with state law. So, I guess if there are additional, if there's additional work on the safety element that's beyond the existing scope, anything that's beyond the existing scope, I'd say would require additional funding. So, it would be, I think it would be best to kind of clarify what, what the objective of the additional scope is, and there might be ways of achieving some of those objectives outside of a safety element update. As was stated previously, the county is going to embark on the local hazard mitigation plans, a multi-year process. The city will be heavily involved with that. If it's a matter of some data collection or some analysis, some of that might be able to live outside the safety element, so I think it's really important to identify what aspect of the safety element in of itself needs to be updated. So, there will be the future Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and through this action that we're trying to achieve this year, the, and it was stated on like Page Four of the document, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan is being referenced and adopted as part of the Safety Element Update. So, as part of that future update to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, there's going to be a Safety Element Update, because that's, that's what's going to be critical for some future funding sources. So, we're already planning for a future update to the safety element, so I guess one question would be whether that's part of that. Another thing about the safety element, and it's referenced here, is state law. I think it's SB 272 about sea level rise and resiliency plans. There's recent extensive work that BCDC is doing to establish the guidelines for updating, preparing and updating those plans. City in Menlo Park, as far as I'm concerned, is pretty far advanced in being able to prepare such a plan once BCDC establishes the guidelines. I think we need to put quite a bit of energy in being first in line for preparing that plan, getting that adopted and reviewed by BCDC, because that's going to be critical for addressing some of the sea level rise issues that a number of residents and businesses in the, in the community face. So, I would want to make sure that we understand that full package of things that are important for the, related to the topic of safety before identifying a desire to pursue some of those other changes to the safety element this year. I, I, I think we're best kind of staying the course with completing the update of the safety element this year.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the clarity on, on the safety element. And bringing back the question around funding, I did bring up at, I believe it was our last city council meeting, I believe, last Tuesday, about kicking off the environmental justice element with some funding from the Hazard Mit, Hazard Mitigation Plan, from the Bayfront Mitigation Plan, Fund. And I believe that a fair amount of money to help this process would be $1 million from the fund. I am also in support because I believe that that's coming from money that's for the community, but there also, I believe, needs to be some funding from the city, from the city's general fund. So, I'm just putting that out there because I believe that that's fair. And didn't know if any council member had any follow-up about that.
So, I am, I would be curious to hear from staff, maybe not right now, but just how that would actually work to get money from the general fund, given our budget constraints.
I am very supportive of allocating $1 million from the Bayfront Mitigation Fund for this purpose.
Agreed.
All right, well, at this time, if there isn't any other comments, we did cover all the, the questions that staff had. Just want to make sure we wrap up the, this item, the study session. Are there any clarifying questions from staff from, for City Council members?
Thank you. I think, why don't we try to summarize what we've heard? And then, we appreciate all the feedback, so give us a minute. We'll just collect our notes, and then we can repeat back what we've heard and, and then identify the next steps.
All right, I'll go ahead and get started, and we're going to try to do our best to summarize at a high level the, the topics, and I, I'd start this off by saying a lot of these are explore. None of these were explicit, direct changes, but see with the ideas in mind what can be modified in some of the existing language. And then also, okay, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and get started here.
Okay, I think there was an exploration of soft-story buildings, and this is for the safety element. There was information or, or a request for potentially additional information to connect sea level rise and climate, climate change in the, in the safety element, taking data from the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Moving on to specific items in the EJ Eight table of this, of the environmental justice element. So, looking at where feasible to explain and expand on indoor and outdoor air quality. To, we need to clarify on Item 2I about if it's specific to downtown, no smoking or, or smoking ordinance in general, highlighting in 5.1 and 5.2 that it should be all locations, particularly in the underserved areas, making it clear that under 5A, that it would be a property owner responsibility to do any soil remediation. 5E, more for a clarification of the language, so needing editing just for clarity. I think there was a general comment about the support for our satellite center and making meetings more accessible. There were some key themes around accountability and prioritization and accessibility and ensuring that the our, our action plan includes metrics for identifying success, looking at more clear timelines, and then how prioritization and funding would occur. I think there was all around simplifying the guide and making it accessible, not only from a readability, but also from our, in our website. Moving on, I think we have information related to, again, more about budgeting, which we heard a little bit more about just now, that there was general support for use of the Bayfront Mitigation Fund and the amount of $1 million to support our initial EJ element action items. There was information related to the biosafety level, so do not include staff's recommendation for an added program, but to come back with a study session on the item first. There was some clarification around like the shoulds and the, and the must, and, you know, making sure that we sort of have a balance between the two to definitely demonstrate the city's commitment, but not necessarily to put us in a box or in a corner for any partic, any one particular item. One example was given was related to the parks and the use of, and upgrading or adding bathrooms to all parks, so it may not be good for every, every location. There was some conversation around the anti-displacement strategy, I think, just to elevate the item around representation and legal counsel and tenant protections that I think Mr. Kennedy highlighted as one of the top priorities from the community conversations. And where feasible to look at access to healthcare. There was an elevation of the rental registry, which is part of the anti-displacement strategy. Access to higher education, if there can be some incorporation into some of the goals and policies. Access to Wi-Fi, including more broadly, community-based organizations as part of the work. Looking at, and this is back into the safety element, about disaster and emergency plan, plan preparation, which would include our business districts as part of that plan, if there's any clarifying language. And then there was some information about cooling centers in Bellhaven, as well as other locations in the community and other community resources. And then that was around conversations around extreme heat. And then the idea of having a recognition of potentially having a concierge or, or a dedicated person or a resource at BHCC. And then I think we talked a little bit about safety element funding, but not, we're going to stay the, it sounds like we're going to stay the course, focus on the, the specific updates and not, and potentially have an update to the safety element when we do our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update in a few years, and that could be another opportunity to add changes to the safety element. I think that is it. I think some of the things that we did talk about are, are already in the plan, so we can come back and highlight where in the document those things already exist. And so, I think the next step, what I heard is the council would like us to return with potential changes before we make modifications in a final document, if I heard that correctly, or we're good making with that feedback, good making changes into a final document.
I think directly making, if, please let me know if I'm wrong, but directly making that feedback would be preferred. Rather than extending the, the effort even further to come back with recommendations and go, just, just go ahead and make those changes. Yeah, and I want to clarify, that was fantastic. Want to clarify on my comment about the, the different tables that are in here, not just about accessibility and reducing it, but actively prioritizing, and so cutting down the laundry list is a request. So, instead of, you know, 25 pages, can that be 10, and really focused on what are the new explicit things that are happening with this EJ element? Or, you know, in the, in the EJ chart that's in the, in EJ element itself, there's programs and policies combined in the same sections, and I think that that's a little confusing to have everything wrapped up in one, and so, just thinking more about how do you make this information more useful for staff to come back and reuse this, and for community members and City Council to watch and update those. Thank you.
My concern with simplifying it, I would love to see it simplified, but one of the messages that I took away was that the community was very happy to see that their information had been captured, so I would be concerned about, and I know you had some ways So I would be concerned about, and I know you had some ways maybe drilling down. But just to make sure that it's great that you have captured so much of the community's. Concerns and what they're looking for, and so if if there's a way to simplify it without losing that, great.
Yeah, I want the granularity, I want all the feedback, but I want to make sure that we're not overpromising on 120 items. When really there are seven priorities that we're really focusing on and having metrics and tracking on. And then that's getting lost in the soup of everything else. And so I want to make sure that it's it's clear and understandable for folks to track. What are the the real things the city is prioritizing and focusing on? Because I know, like with our priority setting, that it, we can't achieve that laundry list in one go.
Thank you, and then one that I didn't hear was on two point three, the policy. This is on page EJ forty in the table EJ eight. Considering whether it says that that. Policy is going to be removed and consider whether that could stay as a multi-jurisdictional. And that's entirely staff's. Decision, but just it seems that there is a role, strong role there.
Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, I'd just like to take a moment to note, because we didn't include this slide in the council's presentation this evening, but we did include it for the Planning Commission Study Session on June three. We did show an excerpt of a sample simplified layout of the goals, policies, and programs. So that's something that we intend to do for the next version of the draft EJ element. The information that is provided in these different tables, it lives, it lives on in the public record, it's accessible, it's available on our website. This valuable feedback will definitely not be lost. And in addition, we'll be looking to further enhance our EJ Element Outreach Section in our draft document to incorporate the May twenty twenty four report from CRC as well as really making clear the recommendations as well as those top three EJ Element Goals to pursue.
Thank you for that information, you're talking about table two, highlighted programs. That's on page. Page five of the Planning Commission Staff Report.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, it is a simplified layout of the programs that look very similar to what you saw in the Housing Element, so a very streamlined presentation.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nash has one more question. You said that you. That you were not going to follow the staff's recommendation for biosafety. Could you explain what the staff's recommendation was to include biosafety in the Safety Element?
Thank you, yes, in the. Staff report, so it's on page D dash one point five. There was a consideration for adding a program to evaluate biosafety levels into the Safety Element as a, as an additional program. But what I'm hearing is before we even add anything to the Safety Element, let's bring it back for a study session, understand what does that mean? What are the regulatory? Regulatory agencies, you know, what would that mean for our code before we actually implement a specific program?
And will it be too late if we decide? I think you got it exactly right, but will it be too late to add it to the Safety Element? And does it matter if it is not in the Safety Element if? Council decides to proceed with something. In the biosafety.
Yeah. So I think, given the timing of when we hope to bring this back and potentially when we could actually do a study session on biosafety levels, I I believe it would be too late to add a specific program. But it doesn't mean that's city council can't say, yes, like this is a thing that we want to continue to pursue and we want to turn that into a zoning ordinance amendment and then figure out where amongst the other staffing priorities. You know, where does that fit in on bringing back a potential ordinance? So I don't think it necessarily needs to be. A written program in the Safety Element to actually do an actual implementation.
Thank you.
Is it possible just to leave that line in there and just put the action as a study session?
If that's the council's wish, but we would need more more clear direction if that is the desire to actually put a program in.
I know that for other things that we've done. It hasn't lived within specific elements, but it's still an action, you know, we've passed ordinances that don't live within an element. And I wonder if that path is still. Grounded and, you know, it it's implementable and enforceable. Might be a better way to to explore this as as opposed to having it directly in the element.
What's the difference? Can you elaborate, Councilmember Nash?
What is the difference between having it in a Safety Element and as proposed by staff? And going through the study session and if. Council decides that we do want some zoning changes and some. For the biosafety levels, what is the difference between having it inside and outside of a. Safety Element?
I think, excuse me, if I may, Mayor Taylor, members of the council. One distinction is if you have a program in your Safety Element, it it's easily tied back to that program when we bring you the zoning ordinance implementation. So in this case, if your direction is we want a program that basically says we're going to look into this. I don't think it adds a lot more than if you just said to us tonight, we want you to bring back to us an item, you know, within the next calendar year to look at this. If you said something, you know, along the lines of, these are the exact steps we want to see, perhaps that would give it a little more weight. So I think it's a little bit of a distinction without a difference. I think we're hearing you loud and clear that this is something that you want to continue to think about. I don't think it has to be identified in the Safety Element in order for you to implement that direction.
That's excellent explanation, thank you.
Well, thank you, at this time, the council doesn't have anything else to add other than thank you all for the presentation, your time and your input and for listening to our questions and following up with us, thank you. If you all want to stay with us, you're more than welcome to. Thank you for your patience, the next agenda item is our regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular business item is E one, adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty four budget. Here to introduce this item is our finance and budget manager, Rainie C.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, good evening, City Council. Joining me today is Brittany Mello, Admin Services Director. The item before you this evening for consideration is a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty three twenty four budget to include a one-time transfer of 1.75 million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund for projects outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan or CIP. On May fourteenth, the city council held a study session to provide direction on the proposed five-year CIP and confirmed project project prioritization based on evaluation criteria, available funding, and staff resources. The CIP includes sixty-four projects with a ninety four, ninety-seven million dollar budget designed to meet the infrastructure needs and priorities of the community. The CIP is funded through grants, special funds, special revenue funds, water enterprise fund, and annual transfers from the general fund. This transfer has averaged 4.7 million dollars annually from fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen through twenty twenty three twenty four. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five budget that will be brought to the count, to the city council on June twenty fifth for adoption includes a 3.2 million dollar transfer from the general fund to the CIP. However, this amount does not meet the anticipated funding needs totaling the 4.6 million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty twenty five. And there are additional unmet funding needs in future years for the CIP. On June eleventh, staff provided the city council with an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty twenty, twenty twenty three twenty four year-end projections for the general fund, which included an estimated year-end surplus of 3.1 million dollars. At that same meeting, city council approved a general fund transfer of 576,000 dollars for the pavement slurry project. This reduced the year-end surplus to 2.6 million dollars. Staff are recommending a one-time transfer of 1.75 million dollars from the projected surplus from the general fund to the General Capital Improvement Fund to support CIP funding needs and planned project expenditures in fiscal year twenty four twenty five. This transfer would reduce the projected general fund surplus for fiscal year twenty three twenty four to 806,701 dollars. Staff recommends maintaining this surplus to offset any unanticipated variances in revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year twenty four twenty five. At this time, we're looking for city council direction on the proposed amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty four budget. I just want to point out, there is a correction on the resolution, there, it's missing a word. It should be 1.75 million, not 1.75. So staff is available to answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Rainie, for the presentation, and at this time, are there any clarifying questions from city council members before we go to public comment? Ms. Herron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item E one, adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty four budget. If you are participating in chambers, please complete a speaker card at that back table. If you are participating at BHCC, please provide a speaker card to Matt Pruder. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item E one. Okay, and I am seeing no pings from BHCC, no hands, no cards in chambers. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Herron, and bringing it back to the dais and seeing, I would like to open it up for a city council member questions or discussion. Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any questions or? Discussion, all right, well, at this time, is there a motion and a second on the table?
I'm happy to motion. Oh, second.
Thank you, so I have a motion on the floor by city council member Dorr and a second by city council member Nash to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty four operating and capital budget to include a one-time transfer from the general fund to the General Capital Improvement Fund of 1.75 million dollars for projects outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
City council member Woolison.
Yes.
City council member Dorr.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, and at this time, that was the last item on our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.